Thank you. I'm going to deviate from the regularly posted agenda and recess the regular meeting of the Glendale City Council and call to order the special meeting of the Glendale City Council of January 17, 2012. And for that special meeting, may we have the roll call.
Council members, Manukian.
Here.
Wintaro.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Friedman, Mayor Protam, Najarian.
Here.
Much as you'd love, I think, to do a second invocation, Artie, we're going to skip over that and get right to the action item. It's not an action item, but the item number one on the agenda. I'm going to turn to our city manager, Mr. Ochoa.
Certainly. If we may, if I could just read the posting in compliance with the Brown Act, the agenda for the January 17, 2012 special meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Monday, January 16, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. And before you, is an update on Senate Bill 659 and related redevelopment litigation and legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. And as we have Mr. Lanzafam come to before the council to make an update and presentation on what's going on. The reason why we're having this special meeting is that the situation with respect to the future redevelopment is changing rapidly. It's evolving day by day. And new information continues to come out of Sacramento. So that being the case, we want to make sure the city council has the very latest and greatest information with which to make suggestions, recommendations, and ultimately, policy. So that being said, we'll have Mr. Lanzafam give a brief presentation about where we are now and then answer any questions for the council that you might have.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor Protam, members of the city council, it was just last week we were before you with a report, a status report. The main thrust of our communication to you today is late last week Senator Padilla introduced SB 659. It is legislation that would postpone the implementation of AB 26, the law that dissolves redevelopment agencies, would postpone it from February 1st to April 15th. Again, that would give time for legislators and the redevelopment industry to work together to fashion a new redevelopment program, one that meets the needs of the state and local jurisdictions. In addition, we had reported last week that Senator Steinberg had introduced legislation. And in fact, we've seen a little bit of that language. That would six, that bill is 654. That would allow the housing authority to maintain fund balances, to keep those fund balances and continue to do some affordable housing.
You mean the 20% set aside?
The 20% set aside. Under AB 26, that is those funds that are in our balance, the balance that are in our funds, rather, is something we're supposed to send to the big trust fund. This legislation would allow us to keep that. I just wanted to pick out a few slides, Michael or Artie, if we could advance, just from last week again to remind of the impacts of unwinding the city's redevelopment program. These are the projects that are in jeopardy, if not going forward. The Central Library rehab and reconfiguration, the Alex Theater expansion, Central Avenue improvements, among the biggest ticket items. I would note under the Central Library, the Glendale, Friends of the Glendale Public Library adopted a resolution today supporting Senator Padilla's legislation. Next slide, please. Again, the housing program, if it stands as it is, these are the types of things that we would lose. No new development. All of our rental assistance programs for both life rap and vet rap would go away, first time home buyers and rehabilitation.
And as you're seeing, the affordable housing elements of the redevelopment elimination start to hopefully unravel to a degree. I think that's an indication that what is happening in Sacramento is not what anyone intended. The AB 26 elimination casts a huge net, but there are still many, many things that are positive that redevelopment agencies do. And now what I think you may end up starting to see is more of special legislation designed to peel away the things that weren't intended. And again, it makes for a very complex wind down of redevelopment.
These are some of the assets, again, that were transferred to the city in hopes that they may be protected under the legislation that was adopted and upheld by the Supreme Court. These properties may in fact be sold, have to be sold. They include the Alex Theater, the green within the Americana brand, as well as the parking structure, the lot that the parking structure sits on, some properties that we own across from the Americana, and some properties we own in the exchange.
And this level of complexity helps point out that, again, even if you are not in favor of redevelopment, unwinding it in a four-month period or a four-week period is extraordinarily complex, if not impossible. If it's going to be done, then it needs to be done intelligently over a longer period of time. One, so agencies and communities can dispose of assets in a way that makes sense to the community, but also to make sure that there is an opportunity for a replacement for redevelopment. We are up the proverbial creek, and without redevelopment, we will be without that paddle. So the idea is to make sure that there is a commonsensical way to make the transition.
Next slide, please. This was the case study that we did on the Lenley-Loffs project. Again, this slide is if, pre-AB 26, if redevelopment was operating the way it had in the past, we noted $1.3 million to this community, $588,000 in fees, jobs created, the intangible benefits. We corrected this sales tax. We actually looked back and revised our estimate, the $26,000. But we have shown what the state of California would receive, $160,000 annual in sales tax if this project were to go forward. And the next slide, and I should, while we're here, $123,000, those are school development fees. The $75,000 is a statutory pass-through. That's what we pass through to the school district every year. We would if we were to build this project. The next slide, please. This shows what would happen if we disposed of the property. With the value at approximately 1.7, Glendale would lose $1.4 million. The city would receive a portion of those sale proceeds, approximately $300,000. The county and the state are the big winners on this. We've shown the Glendale Unified School District as zero. And if you look to the next slide for me, actually, this just shows the two together in comparison. We've shown a zero for the school district for this reason. There is no new net money. Whatever the school district would receive, it would be considered property tax and alleviate the state from backfilling their guarantee of prop 98 funds to schools. Next slide, please, Artie. So here we're showing you pre-26, that property tax is really tax increment. We have some tax sharing, that was that $76,000. Then whatever is left, the state must backfill for a minimum or a guaranteed amount. Under the post-26, whatever we sell off would become property tax. Wouldn't go to raise the amount going to schools or to colleges, community colleges. It would merely alleviate the backfill to state. So for that reason, we listed the gain in the state column on those charts. And then the last slide here. This is the structure that we showed you last time. On the left-hand side, it's really the community, Glendale, that is driving the actions of the redevelopment agency and the housing authority. They elected you to represent them and implement their programs. On the right-hand side is what we see will be the structure in a post-26 era where the state is really the focus. Everybody is serving the state on that, including the successor agencies, the oversight boards. We've listed Glendale there without any kind of line joining it because it really is disconnected. Under 26, the local jurisdiction will lose much, if not all, of the control of those funds and be going to state mandated actions. And the last slide. These are some next steps. As I mentioned at the beginning, Senator Padilla has introduced legislation, SB 659, that would delay the implementation. As the city manager noted, if nothing else, that allows for an orderly wind down. We are down to now two weeks to get all of this done. It's very, very confusing for everybody in this process because the way that the law is set up, it has us do one thing, and yet we don't have an oversight board set up for two or three months that would be overseeing that and making the decisions on that. So there's a lot of pieces that are floating that we're still looking for answers for. So regardless of how anybody feels about redevelopment, I think it's important to slow down and do this in an orderly fashion. The redevelopment industry at this point understands that they need to be part of the fix at the state level and need to be sharing some revenue with the state and then to schools. But the two and a half months would also allow us time to work cooperatively with our legislators to create a new redevelopment program. I said the Friends of the Public Library have adopted a resolution supporting this legislation, 659. The Glendale Chamber of Commerce also endorsed legislation that would delay, although they wanted to see what the final language of 659 looked like. So they're very supportive of the concept. Finally, Glendale Arts will be meeting next week. And from indications that they gave informally at one of their meetings, they will be taking this item up as well and looking for a resolution. With that, if there's any other comments.
And lastly, by way of update, we are reaching out to state legislators. As we had reported last time, we actually have invited our legislators to come before you tonight to answer any questions from the halls of the Capitol from that perspective, because surely that has value to this body as you make policy. If nothing else, we would like, unless there's an objection from the council, to be able to send a letter of support for 659 to our legislators, to the governor's office, to relay what our concerns are. Again, even if you're not supportive of redevelopment, it makes absolutely no sense to wind down in this type of manner. We're trying to claw our way out of a jobless recovery. And so the idea of not having something as a substitute to attract investment, to attract growth in the appropriate locations of our city doesn't make much sense at this point in time. I know we do have at least one of our representatives here tonight.
Well, the representative from the fine cities of La Cañada, Pasadena, Altadena, please come forward. Come forth and state your name, kind sir.
By the way, you are my mom's favorite politician.
Absolutely. And she reminds me of that every time I see her. So thank you very much, council members. And I also want to congratulate Mr. Ochoa on his becoming the city manager. We've worked closely in Monrovia. And I had the pleasure of sitting down with the mayor and the city manager last Friday on the invitation of the city of Glendale to talk about redevelopment and was told that this meeting would be happening tonight, and the invitation was extended to come back again. As it's been said, redevelopment has suffered a significant blow. And I don't think people had thought it through. I personally didn't vote for, I actually voted against the legislation to dissolve redevelopment as a former mayor and council member and a fan of what has happened in the San Gabriel and the San Fernando Valley. I mean, we should be proud of what has happened, both Burbank, Glendale, Pasadena, Monrovia, Glendora. We've got the good actors in the San Gabriel Valley and the San Fernando Valley who have done wonderful projects with redevelopment. And to me, it made no sense to do away with it. Now that that's been done, you are right to wade in. I spoke to Assemblymember Tony Atkins today, who is the Assembly Point Person, and that's one of the pieces of information I wanted to share with the council. Assemblymember Atkins is the Assembly's Designated Point Person on Redevelopment. And now is the time to not only support the Padilla bill, which I also support and have asked to be a co-author of, but it's the time to make the bodies, both the Senate and the Assembly, aware of your unique circumstances. Because as it's been said, it's going to be impossible to dispose of the property, to do what needs to be done in four weeks. At the very least, we need the extension of time to try to do this pragmatically. We also need to figure out some way to reestablish redevelopment or a framework of redevelopment to give you the tools that you need to do. So I would encourage the council, in addition to sending a letter of support for the Padilla bill, I would discuss amongst yourselves your unique circumstances. For example, in Sierra Madre, part of City Hall's parking lot is redevelopment property. Now, does that mean a private concession is going to come in and charge people to park at City Hall? Of course not. But nobody envisioned that when the bill was drafted. So I've encouraged them to bring their unique circumstances to the attention of the Senate and the Assembly. So to the extent you can articulate, and I have the handout that you've given, gave me last Friday, you have a great story to tell of how successful you've been. I would also work in concert with the League of Cities, the California Redevelopment Agency. You might want to extend an invitation to Senator Padilla, as well as Senator Lou, to come discuss what steps can be taken to help in your unique circumstance. My office is a resource. Please CC me on all of your correspondence, so I know what you're asking for. You have my support in trying to figure out a way to reestablish redevelopment. I know what you've done, and I know why it's important to the city. And don't be shy with your handout. With that, I'll take questions if you have any.
No, I just want to thank Assemblymember Portantino for being here and willing to come here and ask or address the issue. That is foremost on everyone's mind as far as economic development in the cities.
Absolutely.
And all the other cities as well. So thank you for coming and addressing the issue.
Well, you have been a leader on, you know, with Habitat for Humanity, affordable housing. I mean, obviously, anybody who's been down brand knows how great this city has been. And it's important to do what we can do. So please use me as a resource.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, again, we thank you for taking time to come down and keep up the good fight.
Yeah. And please let me know what the specific circumstances are when you write to Assemblymember Atkins. She's from San Diego. She's a former city council member in San Diego, so she's very familiar with how valuable redevelopment is. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have two cards from the public. Unless there are any other, are there any representatives from any of the other elected officials?
I do not see them.
I don't see. Okay. First speaker is Mike Mohill, followed by Herbert Milano.
Mr. Mayor Protam. Evening, council members. Mayor Protam, Manukian.
Mayor Protam, Najarian.
Najarian. And to view in public, my name is Mike Mohill, a longtime resident of Glendale. I believe Governor Brown mentioned the elimination of redevelopment, not just this month, but many months ago. And so you've had a long time to do something with it. As far as I see, you've been playing defense. How can we stop it? We have a cash cow here called redevelopment. I look at redevelopment as a form of corruption. Look at the housing where we are charging, let's say, they were like $500,000 to $700,000 a unit for an affordable housing unit, redevelopment money, all that kind of stuff. It's called corruption. The money should be go to the schools, K through 12 and colleges. We didn't need to pass a bond last year if we had the money. Special interest wants to stop. They want to keep the redevelopment program going. People like the Lenley Theater, courtyard by Marriott. We have the Museum of Neon Art. Now, there's an example of wasteful money, wasteful millions of dollars on a project that was so good, they didn't have any money to fund their own project. So they came to Glendale. And we had a councilman who rallied behind that project for his reward. He's no longer here today. Alex Theater, a half a million dollars every year, the city subsidize that theater. The Sacred Cow of Glendale, if it was so good, why don't we let it stand on its own two feet? I've had calls from people telling me, Mike, Al Hoffman, in fact, told me, don't forget to mention my name that I'm against, redevelopment. Could all it has done is created nothing but corruption in this city. Council people get campaign contributions. Mr. Rick Caruso, for example, Mr. Weaver was a great benefactor of his campaign contributions, and there are others too. So let's, the public, we don't need redevelopment money. Let the city stand on its own two feet. It's a political football by the politicians who want it. Thank you. My name is Mike Mohill.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Mr. Milano.
Mayor Protam, Najarian, members of the city council and city staff, my name is Herbert Milano. The original concept of having a redevelopment agency was a concept that I think many cities absolutely needed. It was devised way back, at least for Glendale in the early '70s. The objective for many of the cities was to mitigate the problem with blight, especially blight in downtown in the center of many cities. So the objectives were honorable. But I think that during the years, we have seen significant problems with redevelopment agency, and Glendale is no exception. One of the primary problems with redevelopment money has been the part of the law that allows the cities to abuse eminent domain, to basically take the property rights of individuals who through their own effort and their own initiative have provided for themselves some type of real estate property. And here comes the city will take and force the sale of that property so it can be given to somebody else. I don't think that was the original intent of eminent domain, and redevelopment agencies across California have abused it. And this city abused it not too long ago, not more than a year ago, during the issue of the hotel next to the Americana. There's a significant problem with the use of the 20% set aside money used for low-income housing. Today, you can buy a multifamily apartment building with subterranean parking, land, the whole deal, $212 a square foot. And yet, the housing authority has been buying during the past five years and paying for $350 a square foot, $450 a square foot, and over $500 a square foot for properties that oftentimes are considered below the quality of the properties that you can buy independently. Section 8 is not going to be impacted. That's federal money. So let's be very clear that that money is not going to be touched here with this particular action. Redevelopment has been used as a leverage by many developers of hotels to come to a city and says, if you don't give me redevelopment money, I'll go to another city to get redevelopment money. And as such, what we have created is corporate welfare. The school districts have been shortchanged. The controller of California, Mr. Chang, has identified tens of millions of dollars of money that's been shortchanged to the schools. And at the end of the day, the California budget that is going to be supported by the transfer of redevelopment money eventually, that money with a better budget is money that will eventually go to support the schools. I think that it is time to not delay this thing any further and have redevelopment end its rightful end. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have no other speakers on this item. Mr. Ochoa, what is the action that is required on this? Is there some consensus to send a letter?
Really, it's more if there is an objection, without objection, we would send a letter and pursue support of 659. So it's really more of an update for council to make sure that the council concurs that the benefits of redevelopment, particularly in the downtown business district, are important to the community and that the agency remain viable.
Are there any objections to that?
Well, I'd like to say a few things.
Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Mohill shows his ignorance again, calling, sitting up here, operating under the guise of corruption. If we were a corrupt city or council, we wouldn't be sitting here. A lot of what goes on with redevelopment is a lack of education with the public on what is happening to their cities. I don't know how, Mr. Portantino, how we get that word out. You see an article here and there. We knew when it was happening months ago, but the press didn't pick up on it. It wasn't newsworthy. It wasn't sensational enough. When it happens and the impacts hit, the public will then cry out, and they'll cry out too late. Talked about other projects besides Glendale, Burbank Downtown, I think was redevelopment, Downtown Los Angeles, Bunker Hill, all the projects on there, all redevelopment. And in the Americana, not one single property was taken by condemnation, not one. Every one was a negotiated sale. And when the redevelopment agency was originally created, the Galleria was put in, hundreds of homes were taken. We wouldn't have a Galleria today. Wasn't right to take it. That's another issue. That's a moral issue, maybe. But I was here in the '70s. I didn't hear outcries or whatever. More people go to the Galleria than go to Disneyland in a year. And the Americana, over 50 properties, 50 to 70 properties, all taken through negotiation, a fair price. So to say that we've done these terrible things, you know what would be down at the Americana today if we hadn't built it? It'd be vacant lots, sitting there, waiting for somebody to come in with money and do it on their own. Not likely. It's a partnership to make these things happen. You say, you want to give more money to the school. Well, they're going to get their money. You want to give more to the schools. That's great. So you educate the kids. They grow up. They go out looking for a job. The jobs aren't there. Redevelopment creates jobs. It creates revenue. So you want to give all that up? Fine. That's what the governor wants to do. Sacramento is about taking care of the state budget. In my 15 years here, the state has come down time after time to take additional sources of revenue from the city to balance the state budget. So they're going to pilfer away even more this time. And if it ain't enough, they'll be back again. So I think the governor and the state legislature made tremendous errors in this. And everyone here can disagree with me, but we're all going to live to see the outcome if these go under with no remedy for it. So whatever can be done to educate the public, get an uproar going, that may be the only way the state will listen. Because the leaders up there in the Assembly and the Senate aren't listening. They're not going to support anything we want to do. We're peanuts. So to say I'm upset, yes, I'm very upset. And I just wish the public, like all of you, understood more of the impacts it's going to have on this city. Hate to see the Alex Theater, for instance, go away. It'll have to be sold. Anybody can come in, as far as I know, they could tear it down. They could tear the Alex Theater down. It's private property to a degree. Even there's a historic, I don't know if that would factor into it. But they can modify, they can do a lot of things to it and other properties. Who knows what they'll do? What do you think of the state coming in and telling us what we can do with the land within our city boundaries? I've never heard of anything in my life, but that's what will happen. The state will run us more than they do now. So I've said enough.
I just want to say that I'm in support of sending a letter.
And I just want to add, since we were looking at some projects here that are going to be affected, one that was not listed is in the San Fernando corridor, and that is the upgrading of the railroad crossings to make them safe, which is certainly a life safety issue. But at the same time, upgrading those crossings is one more step towards creating a quiet zone for that entire corridor. So folks that live in those areas, such as Palenconee, to the extent most of the northwest part of Glendale here, those MetroLink, Amtrak, and Union Pacific freight trains coming through and honking their loud, blasting their loud air horns throughout. So that's one more upgrade that is in
So that's one more upgrade that is in jeopardy if the redevelopment funds are sucked up by Sacramento. Okay, it sounds like we have no objections towards the letter.
Do you need a motion?
We adjourn.
No. No motion?
No motion.
General consensus, without a vote. Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the special meeting is adjourned.